We welcome you again to our Bible study at the House of Abundance, San Antonio, Texas. Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, what a delight it is to come together to study your word. We believe you are present with us, for your word says, where two or three are gathered together in your name, there you will be. As we go into this study tonight, we pray that your Holy Spirit will inspire us and open our eyes to see the treasure that lies beneath the printed word. Teach us what you want us to learn from today's study and help us to apply its principles to our everyday life. We pray in Jesus' name, amen. Today, we're going to study the early life of Moses. And we're going to start by reading the first ten verses, the first ten verses of Exodus, chapter two. Exodus, chapter two. And a man of the house of Levi went and took a wife, a daughter of Levi, saw the woman conceived, and bore a son. And when she saw that he was a beautiful child, she hid him for three months. When she could no longer hide him, she turned an ark of bull rushes for him, docked it with asphalt and pitch, and put the child in it, and laid it in the reeds by the river's bank. And his sister stood afar off to know what would be done to him. Then the daughter of Pharaoh come down to bathe at the river, and her maidens walked along the riverside. And when she saw the ark among the reeds, she sent her maid to get it. And when she opened it, she saw the child. And behold, the baby wept. So she had compassion on him and said, this is one of the Hebrews' children. Then his sister said to Pharaoh's daughter, shall I go and call a nurse for you from the Hebrew women, that she may nurse the child for you? And Pharaoh's daughter said to her, go. So the maiden went and called the child's mother. The Pharaoh's daughter said to her, take this child away and nurse him for me, and I will give you your wages. So the woman took the child and nursed him. And the child grew, and she brought him to Pharaoh's daughter, and he became her son. So she called his name, Moses, saying, because I drew him out of the water. In our last study, we saw how a new Pharaoh, who did not know Joseph, mistreated and enslaved the children of Israel because he was afraid of the way they multiplied and became mighty. But the more they were afflicted, the more they grew in number. Then Pharaoh asked the Hebrew midwives to kill the baby boys born to the Hebrew women as soon as they were born, and order the midwives refused to carry out because they feared God. Chapter one of Exodus ended with the king's command that every boy born to the Hebrew women should be thrown into the Nile River. It was at this time that Moses, who was destined to become one of the greatest national leaders in history, leading a nation from the scratch, was born. After his mother had nursed him for three months in hiding, baby Moses was left in an ark of bull rushes on the bank of the river Nile. His rescue and upbringing were amazing. By God's providence, Pharaoh's daughter adopted Moses as her son. Moses received the best secular education possible for a person of his time while he grew up as a prince in Pharaoh's palace. However, it was in his home that he received his most important lessons. The influence of a godly parent's life and teaching cannot be underestimated, even when the parents do not see the results in their own lifetime. Joker bid Moses' mother, a godly woman, was hired by Pharaoh's daughter to take care of her own son and was paid to care for him. How awesome can God be? Moses, who would have died as a result of the king's order, ended up in his own palace and was treated like a prince. What an amazing God we serve. The double influence of a nurse mother with a heart of God provided Moses with a unique foundation. Certainly, before his mother took him to the courts of Pharaoh, she must have told him of Pharaoh's order to kill all the male babies. As a woman of faith, she must have done all she could to impress upon her son the knowledge of God. Most probably, she stressed God's faithfulness as she told him about the lives of the patriarchs, Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. Possibly, she expressed her hope that God will one day use Moses to deliver the Hebrew people. Now let's read the rest of that chapter, chapter two, beginning from verse eleven. Now it came to pass in those days, when Moses was grown, that he went out to his brethren and looked at their burdens. And he saw an Egyptian beating a Hebrew, one of his brethren. So he looked this way and that way, and when he saw no one, he killed the Egyptian and hid him in the sand. And when he went out the second day, behold, two Hebrew men were fighting. And he said to the one who did the wrong, why are you striking your companion? Then he said, who made you a judge, a prince, and a judge over us? Do you intend to kill me as you killed the Egyptian? So Moses feared and said, surely, this thing is known. When Pharaoh heard of this matter, he sought to kill Moses. But Moses fled from the face of Pharaoh and dwelt in the land of Midian, and is sat by a well. Now the priests of Midian had seven daughters, and they came and drew water, and they filled the troughs of water to water their father's flock. Then the shepherds came and drove them away. But Moses stood up and helped them and watered their flock. When they came to Reuel, their father, he said, how is it that you have come so soon today? And they said, an Egyptian delivered us from the hand of the shepherds, and he also drew enough water for us and watered the flock. So he said to his daughters, and where is he? Why is it that you have left the man? Call him, that he may eat bread. Then Moses was content to live with the man, and he gave Zipporah his daughter to Moses, and she bore him a son. He called his name Gashom, for he said, I have been a stranger in a foreign land. Now it happened in the process of time that the king of Egypt died. Then the children of Israel groaned because of the bondage, and they cried out, and their cry came up to God because of the bondage. So God heard their groaning, and God remembered his covenant with Abraham, with Isaac, and with Jacob. And God looked upon the children of Israel, and God acknowledged them. The next thing we hear about Moses was that when he was forty years old, he killed an Egyptian who was smiting a Hebrew, one of his brethren. This fact that Moses was willing to identify with God's people and defend them might have caused him to act so suddenly and without wisdom. But it also should that he had faith. He rejected since temporary pleasures for the honor of suffering for God and with God's people. Hebrews eleven twenty-four to twenty-six. Hebrews eleven, twenty-four to twenty-six. By faith, Moses, when he became of age, refused to be called the son of Pharaoh's daughter, choosing rather to suffer affliction with the people of God than to enjoy the passing pleasures of sin, estimating the reproach of Christ's greater riches than the treasures in Egypt, for he looked to the Lord. Verse twenty-seven, by faith, he forsook Egypt, not fearing the wrath of the king, for he endured a sin in him who is invisible. And verse twenty-eight, by faith, he kept the Passover and the sprinkling of blood, lest he who destroyed the firstborn should touch them. Moses knew who he was, but he had not the maturity to go with it. This only comes through the school of God. What he did was as a result of youthful exuberance and overconfidence going together. Moses had the instincts of a deliverer, but he lacked the character of a deliverer. He lacked patience, humility, and wisdom. He still needed to be shaped by God. We Christians must know that even though we are in Christ, we are still prone to sin. The Israelites were undergoing excruciating pain. The solution? Moses killed an Egyptian. Did that solve the problem? Of course not. He buried the Egyptian in the sand, trying to hide the evidence of his sin. But it was a fellow Israelite that exposed him the next day. Do you intend to kill me as you killed the Egyptian? He asked Moses. So his action was not hidden after all. Pharaoh got to know about it and wanted to kill Moses. So he fled for his life to the land of Midian. Acts, chapter seven, say something about these incidents. Acts seven, twenty-three to twenty-nine. Acts seven, twenty-three. Now, when he, Moses, was forty years old, it came into his heart to visit his brethren, the children of Israel. And seeing one of them suffer wrong, he defended and avenged him who was oppressed and struck down the Egyptian. For he supposed that his brethren would have understood that God would deliver them by his hand, but they did not understand. And the next day, he appeared to two of them as they were fighting and tried to reconcile them, saying, men, you are brethren. Why do you wrong one another? But he who did his neighbor wrong pushed him away, saying, who made you a ruler and a judge over us? Do you intend to kill me as you killed the Egyptian yesterday? Then, at this saying, Moses fled and became a dweller in the land of Midian, where he had two sons. Yes, Moses will one day be the deliverer of his fellow Israelites. But the time was not yet ripe. He had to wait for God's time. Some people today live with the result of such impulsive actions, lack of self-control, and overconfident decisions as Moses did. You remember Peter? Jesus told him he would deny him, but he told Jesus that would never happen. But didn't he deny Jesus? We must pray daily for the grace to avoid taking impulsive actions. Moses had to flee to Midian for fear of being killed by Pharaoh. As Moses arrived in Midian, we can see Moses again demonstrating the instinct of a deliverer that was in him. He rescued seven daughters of Jethro, also known as Reuel, the priest of Midian, from the shepherds who drove them away when they came to draw water for their father's flock. He helped them to water their father's flock. And he left with Jethro, kept his flock, and married one of his daughters, Zipporah. She gave birth to a son, whom Moses named Gashon, saying, I have been a stranger in a foreign land. It was by God's providence that Moses found himself in Midian. He had failed. He needed to learn some important lessons before he could lead the people out of Egypt. There are some lessons which we can learn from Moses' failure. One, apart from God, we can do nothing. No matter how talented we think we are, and no matter how noble our cause and motives, we can accomplish nothing without God. Yes, he was destined to be the deliverer of his brethren, but it was not God's time for him yet. He took action on his own timetable, not God's. The second thing we can learn, he attempted to do God's work in his own way. We are capable of terrible things if we go our own way instead of God's. If we are not close to God and waiting on him, there is nothing any other person has done, however terrible, that we cannot do. David prays, keep your servant also from presumptuous sins. Let them not have dominion over him. Psalm nineteen, verse thirteen. Psalm nineteen, verse thirteen. The third thing, he assumed others would understand his actions, but they didn't. Acts seven twenty-five says, for he, Moses, supposed that his brethren would have understood that God would deliver them by his hand, but they did not understand. They did not understand the way of making such assumptions. For, the end does not always justify the means. Moses wanted to help his people, but he did the wrong thing. No matter how noble our desires or how right our objectives, it is absolutely necessary we use God's methods to accomplish them. Otherwise, we may be heading for failure, just like Moses. And five, God is able to work in spite of our failures. As a matter of fact, God specializes in using imperfect people. Is able to work in us to overcome our failures. He can work through us again in spite of our failures. In Moses' case, it was another forty years before God called him and sent him back to Egypt. But God never abandoned him during those years. He was preparing him, molding, and shaping him. God is not defeated by our failures. Rather, he uses them to change us and make us more usable to him. So we should not allow our past failures to hinder us from moving forward. So for forty years, Moses was alone with his thoughts in the wilderness, keeping Jethro's sheep. God was out to teach him humility. What would he do with the luxuries of Egypt in the wilderness? A man brought up as a prince, forty years in Egypt. Now he was to spend forty years in the wilderness. The forty years in the wilderness were, however, in the providence of God to prepare him for his great task. He was to become the deliverer of God's people. While doing his work as a shepherd, God taught him discipline and maturity to prepare him to lead his people. God needed to shape him for the great assignment ahead of him. God uses our circumstances to shape us. Moses fleeing from Egypt was God's way of getting him out of Egypt and getting Egypt out of him. At the appropriate time, Moses would by signs and wonders deliver God's people from the bondage of Egypt and lead them into the promised land. He needed this tough training to confront Pharaoh. We need to be trained to be men and women of stuff. The gem inside us must be brought out. That treasure in the earthen vessels that Paul speaks of in Second Corinthians four seven. Paul says, but we have this treasure in earthen vessels that the excellence of the power may be of God and not of us. Second Corinthians four, seven. That treasure, that gem, must be brought out. Moses had to lead sheep before he could lead human beings. Like David, he had to be a shepherd. It takes a lot of patience and concern to be a good shepherd. Moses was going to be a nation builder. And now let's read Exodus, chapter two, chapter three, the first six verses. Exodus three, the first six verses. Now Moses was turned in the flock of Jethro, his father-in-law, the priest of Midian, and he led the flock to the back of the desert and came to Horeb, the mountain of God. And the angel of the Lord appeared to him in a flame, a fire from the midst of a bush. So he looked, and behold, the bush was burning with fire, but the bush was not consumed. Then Moses said, I will turn aside and see this great sight, why the bush does not burn. So when the Lord saw that he turned aside to look, God called to him from the midst of the bush and said, Moses, Moses, and he said, here I am. Then he said, do not draw near this place. Take your sandals off your feet, for the place where you stand is holy ground. Moriah, he said, I am the God of your father, the God of Abraham, the God of Isaac, and the God of Jacob. And Moses hid his face, for he was afraid to look upon God. Moses led his sheep to a remote area, to the back of the desert, and came to Horeb, also known as Sinai, the mountain of God. It is called the mountain of God because of the appearance of God here and later in Exodus, chapter nineteen, verse twenty. It is for the same reason that the place was described as holy. Moses was alone in that place of solitude. Many of us cannot bear solitude. Friends must come in and go out. We must be engaged in one activity or the other. But how many hours do we spend alone with God in a period of twenty-four hours? Quality time. We need to spend more time, quality time, with God, to listen to him and to hear from him. Moses' time in the wilderness was turned into a blessing. God removed all his props, all that he had leaned upon. His stepmother, who was Pharaoh's daughter, his servants in the palace, his delicious food and beautiful time at the palace, God removed them all so that he could lean on God. As a shepherd, he looked for solitary places to be with God. Solitude helps us to see things in their true perspective. We must learn this before the storms of life break into our lives. We must see where the Lord is leading us. Psalm forty-six, verse ten, says, be still and know that I am God. In solitude, Moses learned to be sensitively aware of God's presence. That is where to cultivate that attitude, that is, when we are alone. That burning bush must have been a sight to behold in that lonely place. Moses saw that the bush was not consumed, even in spite of the blazing fire. Very unusual. That burning bush was to get his attention. It was a phenomenon to be investigated. Moses said, I will now turn aside and see this great sight, why the bush does not burn. So Moses turned aside to see why the bush was not burning. And it was when the Lord saw that he turned aside that he spoke to him from the middle of the burning bush. Do we turn aside from our many activities to catch a glimpse of God? Are we aware, like Moses, when God is changing the direction of our lives? Do we care to know what God wants us to do? God will speak to us when we turn aside from our time-consuming activities to spend quality time alone with him. From our Bible study of today, we were able to receive some insight into God's character. One, God will accomplish his plans for our lives, no matter how hard the enemy tries to stop or change his plans and purposes for our lives. No matter how hard the enemy tries to stop or change his plans and purposes for our lives. Two, our God is great and awesome, an amazing God. Moses, whom Pharaoh would have killed along with other Israelite male children. Ended up in his own palace and was treated like a prince. And given the best education that Egypt had to offer. And Pharaoh's daughter even paid Moses' mother for taking care of and training her own son. Three, our failures are not final, and God is not defeated by our failures. Rather, he uses our failures to change us and make us more usable to him. In fact, our God specializes in using imperfect people. And four, God knows how to get our attention. He sent Moses to the wilderness where he could be alone with him. And he properly prepared and be properly prepared for the great assignment that he had for him. What a mighty God we serve. Let us pray. Our dear Father in heaven, how awesome and amazing you are. For who could have imagined that Moses, whom Pharaoh wanted killed. Would have ended up in his palace as a prince? Help us to grow in our faith, to know that no matter what chaos or confusion may be going on around us. You, our Father, have got everything in control. In such cases, Lord, help us to relax and trust that your plans concerning our lives. Will still come true. Thank you, Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join us next time when we shall be studying how God remembered his people. Please read Exodus chapters three and four before the teaching.